Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now open the meeting of the Job Development Authority. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of January 6, 2024. Motion by Commissioner Yuland Camp?
I'd say that's 2025, my apologies.
Oh, it's 2025, okay.
First of the month.
That's a good point, yeah.
And Commissioner Hatch, second. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. Item number four is Ramsey County Fair Board update and release of funds. And I see we have Paul here, if you'd like to come forward, identify yourself and give us an update. I appreciate it, thank you.
Paul Becker with the Ramsey County Fair Board. If you've been out west of town, west of the airport, I think you can see that there's been construction done. They're coming along pretty good, we don't have any doors in yet. We haven't really done anything in the last month. Once we got into the end of December, they've kind of moved on to some other projects. And we've got some inside work, other than the doors, that they're going to wait until things warm up a little bit. They're looking at probably March 1st or so. It's looking good, we're on schedule. The projected end date or completion date is the end of May. So I don't think we'll have any problem getting that. Fundraising has gone pretty good, we can always use more. But we've raised about 2.1 million so far. The project we're projecting at 3.6. So we do have a loan with Western Bank for 1.6. So it looks like we'll have enough, but we'll take any extra funds that anybody has available. And we're still in the process of working on some grants and raising some money. Any questions?
That sounds great, really awesome.
There has been some extra expenses that you never figured out. One of them was extra bathrooms, about 25,000. When we got the permit from the city, which was $10,000, which I thought was quite a bit for an engineered building.
Talk about engineers like that all the time.
But we added that in, and we've got several other things that we've had to add in since then. But I've still got 150,000 of the contingencies left, so hopefully we can make it work. If not, we'll have to raise some more money somewhere else. Okay, that's all I had on that part, I do have one other thing, not dealing with the Fair Board. But Ramsey County Farm Bureau and the College are having a legislative forum on March 15th at 10 o'clock at the College. And we're going to invite the city and the county and schools and whatever to it too. So I figure this would be a good place to let everybody know.
Perfect. Okay. But we do have some action to take, we got authorized expenditure of 25,000 to your town.
Yeah, I just remember that JDA's commitment to this project was that $25,000 over the course of five years for a total of 1.5. I believe was the commitment, so this is the first installment.
I'll make a motion to release the funds of $25,000 to Ramsey County Fair Board.
Commissioner Pierce?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Knowski? Any discussion? No discussion, rule call.
Commissioner Hatch?
Aye.
Commissioner Yuland Camp?
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce?
Aye.
Commissioner Knowski?
Aye.
Presenting.
Aye, motion carried. You've got your money.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, just for a quick update, last meeting, you guys heard about a loan request, facade loan for Tatters Lumber and Supply. You guys forwarded that to the Board of Devils Lake Board for review. They ended up recommending not approval for it, given the fact that it was so far out of our ET zone. It's like six and a half miles out of town. Facade has usually been for the urban core. We have done the pace and the flex pace outside city limits, but never really the facade. I did tell the applicant he could appeal it to the full JDA Board if he did choose, despite the no recommendation. But, I haven't heard. That's what I asked.
Perfect. Anything else? Anything that you want to bring up, Brady, or it's all good?
Yep.
Well, thank you for the attending, so we will now close the Jobs Development Authority meeting. And we will now open up the City Commission meeting. And item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of January 21, of course, 2025. Okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on 21st.
Commissioner Knowski?
I'll second.
Commissioner Yuland Camp? Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. We have nothing under awards and proclamations, nothing under public hearing, nothing under bid openings. Nobody for visitors and delegations. We have commission portfolios and Commissioner Pierce?
What do you got for me there, Chief?
Now that we're wrapped up with the Derby, or wrapping up the Derby, we're starting to shift our focus on to more fire department related things. The parking lot lights is one of the things that we're looking at. We've been looking into those. And with the heads and stuff being a little bit older, we're going to try and see if we can't get some LED heads and get some of them changed out. When we can get a few nicer days strung together here, so. We're looking at that, and then we're starting to schedule out more commercial inspections and some pre-plans for properties around town. And then I was talking with Mike earlier today, we're going to hook back up in April and find out when we can start flow testing with Joel, some of the hydrants around town. So this gives us a little bit better idea what's going on with the water system, so.
Still waiting to hear back about the, our.
We emailed him today and he is out of the office until the 18th or the 28th, I can't remember the exact date, but it was like, yeah, so.
But it's looking good, by the email traffic, so.
Yep, according to the email traffic, we should be done with the training side of it, and I believe they're done with the AEP and the ACM. So it's just meet with 10 here and figure out when we can start the transition, if they don't throw any other wrenches at us, so.
Okay.
Thank you. I handed out a packet to everybody, I went and testified in front of the legislature, the committee on these bills for law enforcement centers. They have not done any motion, there's been no motion on them yet. Supposed to be meeting again this week, I believe, to talk about it again, so no action taken is good news. I included in this packet, just so everybody's on the same page, this is what I presented to them. With current pictures of our current facility and some of the downfalls and shortcomings of it. And what the proposed new facility, some pictures from inside there and explanations. I mirrored it up to the problems we had and showed the improvements that would take care of those problems. If you have any questions on these, let me know. There is one page in there that shows that the current price that was found from the cost study was around low range 88 million. And high range 92.5 million. We have now got that price down by taking out the police department, BCI, State Patrol, parole and probation. And left it just the jail, municipal court, 911, the LEC offices in the lobby. Got it down to the low range of being 64 million, almost 65 million. And the high range around 69 million. So just so you know, that those prices have changed since this was printed. We also had a feasibility study done, so we also have the list of the deficiencies of the existing jail. If we were to renovate the existing building. And some shortcomings that would happen if we tried to add on to the existing jail. It is not doable due to land restrictions and what basically, what are we going to do with the current inmates? If we have to transport them out of there to do construction on an entire building. It's also been addressed on what we're going to have to eventually do for residential reentry center to get that out of the center of town. But it's being discussed because there's transportation problems, because they have to be close to town to get to their jobs, things of that nature. So we're just, it's being discussed, trying to get it away from the school, as far away from that school as possible, because of the offenders that are in there. It's been addressed. And here it shows you what we spend annually within the last year for meals. For both the law enforcement center and the residential reentry center. Which is what we use to show it would be better for us to have our own kitchen within the facility that we could make the meals. Have the inmates help make the meals and everything else, it would save a lot of money, so. Also a projection of annual transportation costs that was done by the captain. If we had to, if we had got closed down because of something DOCR does, or if we have another pipe break, because they're all under concrete underneath that building encased in concrete. This is what it would cost us to have to transport inmates from here to wherever else in the state we needed to take them to. This is just an idea of what it would cost if we do not have a facility here in the Lake Region. And the last one, as I just put in there, I asked what services are available inside the facility for the inmates? Mental health wise, for alcohol abuse, drug abuse. This is, these are some of the different programs that are available for them within the facility right now. And we are seeing great, great results from these. So they are available while they are incarcerated in our facility. And if we got a bigger facility, it would help us to broaden those and improve them. Because right now they're meeting out of the one rec room that's in the building, and they have to reschedule all rec for all inmates. When there's somebody seeing somebody, a counselor in there. And it causes a little uproar in the facility when their rec time gets changed. So it's just some ideas on that. Also, we're going to start moving forward, talking now about how, what we can do to apply for a loan for a facility. So we have the money in hand. And there's this revolving infrastructure loan through the State Bank of North Dakota. I'm going to present this at the next board meeting, so we can try and see and get the ball rolling. Because there's a plot of land we're looking at again right now, another one, I spoke with Mike Graffsgard about that land that the city owns. Outside of town by the industrial park, that is just not going to be feasible to do. But there was land that Tom Har has available, me and Commissioner Frith, Chairman of the LEC Board are going to look at the land tomorrow.
That's what we used to tell them.
Right behind the Travel Plaza. I think it would be an easier sell, because it does not look like a jail facility. The inmates never have to leave that building once they're in there.
That looks like a nice building.
Yeah, it looks like a convention center, you would never know it was a jail. However, that's where we're at on that. If you have any questions on these packets that I gave, this packet that I gave you, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. It's just still a work in progress. And that's where we are right now.
Nice packet.
Just want to make sure everybody was on the same ballgame. We'll discuss a little more about some concerns from the county and the board. Once we get into the long-term planning and consideration that happens later on the agenda. Any questions, Mayor, that's all I have.
Anybody, any questions for the Commissioner? Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Yuland Camp?
Mr. Graffsgard?
I understand there was an incident with street department equipment and a certain police chief's extension court. I don't know if that's worth discussing here.
Why not?
I have documented proof.
Other than that, we've been fortunate so far this winter with the small amount of snow, hopefully that continues. That's all I have.
Okay. Oh, one day you will.
I might.
Okay. Commissioner Hatch?
Mike, anything from sanitation?
Nothing for sanitation, under engineering, just so the commission's aware. We sent out letters for the probable assessments for all the street improvement districts that are out there. Those letters went out last week, so if you hear anything about that. Residents were put on notice, if we complete this project, this is the probable assessment that would be assessed so that benefit the property. We sent out a pile of letters for that. And projects continue.
Great.
That's all I have, Commissioner.
For February, I'll be at the library this coming Wednesday, the 5th, and then again on the 19th. So I'll be doing two Wednesdays at the library to help out with the homestead property tax and primary residence property tax applications. Those have been going really well over there, pretty well attended, seeing at least a half a dozen people each time, so. We'll continue to do that probably through March.
If you let the radio station know, because I'm working there, I know that they just state on their sheet that the tax form can be filled out at this website. But do they know that you'll be?
It's, I talked with Eric Asfar and let him know about through January, but I hadn't updated him yet on the February dates.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that letting them know that you'll be there through that avenue of media.
And then the library's also got us on their calendar, on their social media and stuff as well, so that it's getting out there that that's where I'll be.
Thank you.
And then, you know, it's during the week, they don't necessarily have to come and see me there, I'm willing to help out as long as I'm available. They want to pop in, they can swing in anytime, I'll help them out. Unless you have questions as well, yeah?
Nothing.
He didn't mind, but I'm working on him for that required training now.
You aren't reminded of the day of the Board of Equalization yet?
Oh, so Board of Equalization, we have to meet within the first 15 days of April. So the regular meeting date is April 7th. So we will be meeting on April 7th for the Board of Equalization, in conjunction with the regular commission meeting that night.
Just like we did with Jay Hill, Caplan.
Okay.
That's good situation. We'll try and make the normal.
They'll have to sue us if it has to be leveled out.
Okay. That's it? Commissioner Knowski?
Mike, what about the water?
Last week, over 900 letters were sent out to area residents related to our lead service line inventory. The important thing that I would ask residents to do with that letter. You know, if you have a lead service line and that's been confirmed, there's information related to lead service lines. Lot of information in the letter with that. But the important thing is, we have a very high number of people that haven't given us the information related to their lead service line or their water service line. And we need to know what material that is. So the important thing is that we have to identify the water service line material for all of the buildings, residents, homes within the city. And so we ask people, either they can include within the letters information, so they can identify what that service line is made of. And upload it to our system on their own. If they don't want to do that, all they have to do is contact us at city offices here. And we will arrange somebody to go to their house, and we will identify it and we will put it in the database. But there were significant numbers of letters that went out. We had 780, approximately 780 letters of unknown service line material that went out. The important thing is that within our database, we need to identify what those service lines are made of. So we ask the public's cooperation with that.
Yeah, because I had one individual that was concerned that the letter indicated that there was excess of lead in his water. That's not what it's indicating, it just means that the service pipe doesn't have lead, correct?
Correct, so there's a couple of things there. The identified lead service lines or galvanized lines that require replacement. If you have a galvanized line that's downstream of lead, it's considered lead that eventually will have to be replaced. And so there was, most of the information contained within the letter was mandatory language that was required to be provided. And as part of that required language, it talked about the safety and the things that you can do as an extra precaution. Okay, and here's some of the health effects with lead, that was required language. Within our system, I can tell you that whenever we do lead testing, right? We add chemicals at our water plant that coat that lead service line, if there is a lead service line. So the water itself does not come in contact with the lead. And when we test that service line for lead, even though it's a lead service line, it has always come back safe for us. Okay, so we continue that. I can assure people, their water is still safe to drink. But it's going to be mandated that lead service lines are going to have to be replaced in the next 10 to 15 years. Right, depending upon what happens, how the funding mechanisms work in that timeframe. But right now, it's really looking, in the next 10 to 15 years, I suspect that all lead service lines will be required to be replaced. But the important thing is, we ask residents to help us identify what the water service line materials are made of. So we can have a good database showing, you know, this is the residence, here's what they have at that house, here's what's at that house. And then we'll put together a plan on how to move forward.
So how do they know that? Like, how do they know what it's made out of?
Scratch.
Yeah, probably poly.
It's identified, if they're unsure on how to do it, just contact the city offices and then we'll arrange somebody to go verify it. If you go, the whole point of the water service line is, when you look where that water service line comes into the house, right underneath the water meter. That's the portion of the line that we're concerned with, right before the water meter, as it comes into the building or the home. And then with that, you can just take a key and scratch on it. And typically you would see, hey, it's black, it's plastic. Or if it's lead colored and I scratch it with a key and it peels off fairly easy and it looks silver, that's typically lead. Or it looks like a penny and it's copper. And so we've given information on how they can identify that. I think there's a scan code on the bottom of the letter, you just take your phone, brings you to a website, you can fill everything out, take a picture of it.
It tells you on the website too, what to look for, it gives the instructions actually on.
Anything built after a certain year is definitely not lead. When you're neck of the woods, it's all, you're good.
You're good, but we can't just say unknown, not lead. We really have to know, yes, it's polyethylene pipe, or it's plastic, or it's copper for the most part. Any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Chief?
Now, Mike.
Okay.
We're just getting back to your service line, I had texted you about my lines. Now, when we scratched off, we saw that it was copper, did you record that for me? Because I threw away your letter by accident.
Yep, it's all taken care of.
I do appreciate that.
We do a lot of throwing away stuff, right?
Yeah, many people just call and then we'll walk them through it.
I appreciate that, and that's why we use the key to check it out, so.
You'll get a chance to do that.
And Mayor, we've got Keith O'Hanlon is speaking at the Kwanis tomorrow. I won't be there, but I'll be at the Ramsey County Fair Board meeting, one of the judges for that, so.
Oh, okay.
He's a task force officer, he's going to give an update to Kwanis tomorrow, or tomorrow, June 12th.
Are you participating in spelling me?
Uh, yes. We're trying our best.
You got to really pay attention when you're listening to those kids.
Are you smarter than a fifth grader?
Boy.
You just can't hear them.
It's a challenge, believe me, it's fun, it's a good time.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Other than that, I'm working on our annual report, should have that with you by the, or to you by the next commission meeting.
I appreciate the update and that email this afternoon, so appreciate that.
Absolutely. And that's about all I got, unless you have any questions?
No, that should be good. Spencer?
Mayor, more members of the commission, just giving updates, we are working with the developer on the north end. As far as trying to create some sort of residential housing development up there, going back and forth on some terms. And going to engage city attorney here in the next couple of weeks on some sort of a development agreement, which we'll put forward for your consideration. Terms are going to be different than they normally have in the past with the tax reform and financing and whatnot. Kind of to try and get the ball moving, we'll bring something forward for your consideration. And then, again, we do need to have brought our conversation probably right thereafter, what the city's policy is going to be long term, and how we're going to do that. Greenfield development moving forward, given that the one tool we always use has been eliminated from our toolbox, so. That's what I have there.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Rob, you have one more?
I have, forgot about Dominic, you got anything from the airport?
Not really, we're just snow removing, making sure that planes are coming in. Can't really say it's officially up, we might have broken our record for January for boarding, so.
That's always good news.
Good, yeah.
Keep up the good work already.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it? Okay. Anybody have anything else that they feel not, we'll move on? And let's see, the downtown safety task force status, Spencer, is that yours or?
Mayor, just wanted to make sure that you guys know that some things have occurred over the last two, you know, two weeks since we last met. The chamber did appoint Todd Lon and Katie Bookley to serve as kind of the downtown business owner slash property owner representatives. I know that there's some other business owners that would like to get engaged. The task force meetings are open to the public, so anybody's welcome to come and can have a free flowing discussion. Then try to find some individuals that kind of fit those lines that we had talked about. So I think we have a fair group and we should be able to hopefully get a meeting between now and the next commission meeting. So that we can first let you guys know how that kicks off, those of you that aren't going to be part of it. So, or that aren't going to be on the specific task force itself, so. That's where we stand with that, Commissioner Pierce.
I was discussing with him, putting together, Spencer, should I say, putting together the agenda. And like I mentioned before the meeting, it's going to kind of be, what I would like to see is everybody has the opportunity to speak of what their concerns are. We triage those concerns as to what's the highest concerns, and we just start going from there step by step and addressing all those concerns. Because maybe we'll find out that concern three and concern nine are in the same realm. And we can kind of get something, at least something started to put together, so. I'll continue to keep with Spencer communicating and updating you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
And you.
Okay. Under consent agenda, we have nothing. We're now going to new business, and first item is the North Dakota Parks and Recreation Department on the snowmobile trail. And Mike, I see we have an agreement?
Correct, so include with your packet is an agreement with North Dakota Parks and Recreation for a snowmobile trail lease. The lease is very similar to a previous lease that we have been operating under since, I believe, 2014. We're updating the lease agreement because they want to modify the location of the trail. And so that's included, that map is showing kind of the trail that we're looking at adjacent to our flood protection project. The snowmobile feels that is a more direct, safer route for some of their destinations that they want to get to. As part of the agreements, I want to make sure the term of the lease, the plan would be that we would approve the lease to automatically renew under term one. Paragraph one, and then under paragraph five, we don't want any year round signage. Of course, we have to do mowing and maintenance in the summer months, so they would have to take down their signage and put up new signage every fall. So with those two adjustments to it, I would recommend approval of the lease agreement.
Make a motion to approve, as written?
Commissioner Hatch?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pierce? Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is the city facility long-term planning, consideration of funding options, okay? Just to kind of give a little background and who's on the committee and what we're kind of trying to do here, bear with me a little bit. But first of all, the committee consists of city engineer, assistant city engineer, Devin. City administrator, Spencer, Commissioner Hatch, myself. Let's see, am I forgetting anybody? No, that should be it. We've met as a working group several times to kind of come up with, you know, we've talked about remodeling city hall, relocating city hall. That's been a discussion, probably goes back a few years. But this year during budget time, we did allocate some funding to do some remodel work here. And with, given some of the things that have been occurring in the city the past year. Our focus has kind of switched from remodeling the city hall for city offices as to possibly, given the fact that the law enforcement center is looking at different options for them. And several other things that have come up, we've been kind of toying with the idea that maybe police department needs a little bigger place, bigger space, garages, et cetera. But they're in dire need of, you know, a different home. We thought it was, as we've discussed. We thought it was, as we discuss things, a great opportunity to possibly relocate the police department to the downtown area, give it a better presence to the community, which I think would be really enhancing the safety concerns that we have for public safety, and it it met with a lot of favor. I know that we've had some, I've had some input from the public that they, when they heard that possibly PD would be downtown, they really, they think that's a great idea. And of course, then that brings up what are we gonna do with city offices? I think that city offices still remains in the downtown area, it's a very important location, we should lead by example, we've toyed with some options about whether or not we should build a different, a new building, or open up, find a building that could be remodeled into a viable option, so. Still all progress and work, there's no decisions that we're gonna make here tonight that's gonna affect it. We do, we are going to be looking for a public input and get the feeling from them, but of course, what goes with all this is how are we gonna fund it and what makes the most sense? You know, and we know the state is looking, working real hard and trying to eliminate property tax, that'll be the last thing that we want to try and do is put something on our property tax. Some of the options out there was we have enough opportunity to possibly use sales tax. A lot of communities are going to sales tax for public facilities and public safety, and it really kind of sounds like, given our opportunity with the tourism and farming area, we get a lot of outsiders that come into the community, and they would, sales tax would be real helpful far as them helping pay for some of our buildings. Our buildings, it would, the funding would go towards remodel of possibly city hall, relocation of PD, and we have some long term maintenance items that need to be done on some of our other facilities, so we we're we're going to be having to find a source of income in down the road to take care of some of that, such as our roofs on some of our buildings, and, you know, the, we got city shops out at the airport area, you know, we, they've got all big dollar items needs at some point, and we need to have some source of income. So we we are looking at possibly talking, using a sales tax as an option, like a half percent to offset it, but I'm going to let Spencer take it from here to kind of explain how he proposes it might work.
Yeah, Mayor, more members, Chris, if I just may just step back, I think, you know, right when the the city hall renovation, that working group met, we we went and we worked up a remodel for what city hall could look like in the current use of city hall, and that's an attachment one. Devin, Gassman Assistant Engineers here, he's the one that did the work on all the layouts, met and provide, got feedback from all city staff. But then, you know, further in the conversations, we wanted to make sure that we utilize this building to the best advantage of the city of Devils Lake and the city residents of Devils Lake. And you think of, you know, the needs that the city, city of Devils Lake organization has as far as the facility needs, the police department was one that came to mind, just as you had said. And Commissioner Pierce, I know you've been working valiantly, you're getting paid an equivalent of about $2 an hour for all the work you put in over there at the LAC. And I know that there was conversations about moving the LAC outside of town, or, you know, outside west of town, over there kind of by the industrial park, now kind of on the east side of town, and I think some things needed to come to head as far as would the city of Devils Lake be okay with the police department not being within city, or not being in city limits or being two miles out? And kind of just from offhand comments, just talking to everybody collectively, that was not a whole lot of support for the idea. If I'm wrong with that, anybody wanna correct me? So, so if if the LAC in its current form, its current location is going to change at some point, and we'll say the next five to seven years, then we probably, if we're gonna remodel this building, take that into account. And so it was proposed that, hey, this would be enough square footage for the police department, you tie into the fact that we're having those downtown safety conversations, and if you wanted to relocate PD downtown, you need spaces for garage, while this specific location with the land right to the west, we could build some sort of a drive through garage, which would then mean relocating city hall, which currently, as far as the working group is considered, I want to bring it forward for the full commission's consideration, you know, we could take kind of one of those buildings that's dilapidated downtown and put an investment in there and turn it into something that it otherwise wouldn't, that the private sector probably can't afford to fix up, to be frank. Or we can do some sort of a public private partnership, a lot of things to be considered thereafter. But again, this is all just a framework and a concept that we want to bring forward to the commission. Now, Mayor had talked about funding, and I think it's important that we all say some things bluntly that are all kind of true, but we really don't, Devils Lake, the city of Devils Lake is pretty sales tax dependent, we're pretty quiet about it, but we're a sales tax dependent community. If you look at our general fund, we put forty-two point seven five percent of all the sales tax revenue that we get, the most we can put in our general fund is forty-four percent, and we're putting almost the max in already, and we put more sales tax in than we do levy in property taxes into the general fund to pay for the public safety services, city staff and whatnot. And, you know, I show in the develop, in the staff report, the development patterns and the population of the city versus the region, compare that to other places in North Dakota, and if you include Spirit Lake Nation, we are definitely not a liar, there's no doubt about that, as far as the percentage of people from the region that live in the city versus that live in the region. And you think about, what are the two most predominant industries in the area? Undoubtedly agriculture and tourism, all things that drive on the assets outside of city limits, but do require the city's assets as far as economic needs and whatnot. And so there's, there's an opportunity for the commission to consider, you know, a pivot and view itself as a a sales tax dependent community, own that, and we can take pressure off other resources to fund city operations, specifically property taxes. To do so, you need to do so responsibly, we've worked up a framework where we want you guys to provide some feedback on, that could get these things done while being very financially considered to the residents of the city of Devils Lake, because, you know, Mayor, I don't know if you want to talk about that, but that was one of the things that was huge, is if we did something like this, you know, they just approved the school bond referendum, they did a quarter cent sales tax for the the park district project, just did the ambulance service district, I think everybody's kind of maxed out on that sort of stuff. And to make sure that if we did put forward a proposal, it would be with the best interest of the city of Devils Lake and the residents of the community.
With some sort of relief from their utility bill or something.
Right. And so if you go to attachments three, this is kind of a a concept and idea. Point five, if you take last year, point five percent sales tax would have brought in $960,000. And I I kind of conservatively went and said, hey, let's let's hypothetically a point five sales tax, what if it brought in $925,000? And it increased two percent every year. You you invest the money, so you get a return on investment as well. Kind of doing the rough math and and details to be to be figured out, but thinking, you know, between a relocation of PD here, the addition of a garage, and a relocation of the city, you know, we're thinking anywhere four and a half to six million, depending, right? And and looking at where we're at with some other sales tax debt that we have, plus what the the point five percent sales tax would bring in, and and the bond payment, if you did a fifteen year bond, you're probably looking at somewhere between $400,000 and $450,000. So as a concept is, is you would bond out for fifteen years, $400,000 a year of that sales tax fund would be used for that. And then Mayor, you had, we had mentioned about, you know, the cost cutting and where could we find savings? And we were really first looking at property taxes, given that's kind of the big thing right now. And and residents do have a lot of concern about property taxes and how we can maybe buy down mills over time, how we could maybe immediately lower, lower mills by, you know, fifteen mills, and then keep it flat over the long term. And given what the state's doing in their conversation about property taxes, tax caps, all that sort of stuff, kind of determine that, hey, maybe property tax relief isn't the right time, and we can maybe impact more residents taking a different route, where we looked at on the utility side of things. And right now, the city, we have a nine, we have a $9 water source replacement fee on every account that gets water service with the city of Devils Lake. I think we've kind of told you guys what that water source replacement fee is for. Do you guys want want us to explain that real quick, or you guys feel like you got a good grasp of what that's for?
Good, yeah.
I included that fund as part of the staff report, so you guys can see that. But we could eliminate that fee, which will reduce over, over the course of an entire year, $108 from every person's utility. And we can have a longer conversation at a different time, maybe about where the utility rates are heading, given the changes that we're making in the sanitation department and whatnot, with the goal to reduce people's, we could reduce people's utility bills, again, by a hundred, over $100 a year, with the idea that, you know, you're paying this now, and and in four years, it's gonna be higher, right? Where if you lowered them, then four years, you could be paying, you know, what you're paying today, or slightly just a little bit more, right? And then, you know, if you're gonna become a sales tax dependent community, right, doing so responsibly, right? If you're gonna be exposed to the market, you can't, you can't be spending everything that you have, right? And so kind of the concept was is is creating some sort of a mini legacy fund for the city, right? Where it would slowly grow to a balance to be determined, to be determined by the commission, where it could be capped, right? We don't want to, we can't be hoarding money, right? But we do need to, to, if we're going to expose ourselves to the market, we would need to, need to do so responsibly. And it could be a a big revenue generator for the city as far as, you know, excess unobligated funds that could be transferred over in the general fund to help offset pressures and costs elsewhere. And as you can see, so, and and really, if you're gonna ask the voters for something, right, you need to tab a firm and defined plan, what you're gonna do with it, right? But we can't, we don't want to handcuff future commissions to be able to respond to the need of the citizens of Devils Lake over the long term, which is why, you know, attachment four shows you after years ten, or after years ten, and it shows, you know, eleven to twenty, that there's that discretionary line item there at the very bottom, right? The city could be using that fund for further facility needs, it could be, it could use that to further offset costs to city residents, it could use it for any big infrastructure project needs that comes along to to the city. And so really, with with that idea and that concept as far as relocating PD downtown, using sales tax to do it, using sales tax to do it, becoming less dependent on property tax for the operation of the city, really, I mean, you could create a community, right? And and we have a lot of great things, right? But we would be, and I wrote it down here, you know, we would be, we'd be a community with exceptionally reasonable prop, city property taxes, very low utility rates, great public safety services, and and with the sales tax that reflects the economic and development patterns of the area, really, is is what the proposal is. And so I think we did the math on it, right? So if we did a proposal like this, somebody would have to spend on that point five percent sales tax, you'd have to spend over $21,000 in taxable goods. Twenty-one thousand six hundred, yeah. And and taxable goods to.
Equal that hundred.
To equal that $108. So that's the concept, and it it really want to drive a discussion with the commission on, on what they think about something like that. Because otherwise, it, you know, if it's it's unpalatable, then we can, we can present the the city hall remodel as city hall, and we can get moving on that once you guys get the thumbs up.
Discussion.
Well, I I got an email, I would like to suggest that the mayor and Spencer get in communication with Commissioner Frith, with the county. He's concerned, there there's things they're looking, ways they're looking at helping to fund for the new regional law enforcement center, and they're concerned on the city doing a sale, putting forward a sales tax when county may be looking at doing a sales tax increase to become a home room charter, there's things that they're working on, so I think the communication between the two needs to be looked at as well. Just so we're we're all on the same page with that, I told him I would, I would express his concerns today, because he's emailed me. So my concern is the fact that if we do build this, if this new facility, jail facility gets built, and something falls through here, and we don't have in the plans an office for PD, PD gets stuck.
You just said that they're not planning it, though, and they're.
No, but I'm, no, that's what I'm saying, if we don't build it, we don't include them.
Okay.
But something happens here, and the commission decides as a whole just to remodel this building later on, you know, just as a possibility, where's PD gonna go? It kind of leaves them up in the lurch, you know, so I just, I just, those are, those are just my concerns, I want to make sure that that you all have a viable, this is where you're gonna be, but, you know, so that's just kind of my my concern. I understand that the process behind it must be.
Yeah.
It's the same, but the PD should have been gone out of that building twenty years ago.
Or if we all move out and build a new one, you'll have a health facility for yourself. No, but yeah.
But the thing is, we, there really isn't a structure for us to have any kind of monies coming in to where we can update our facilities.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And so we're archaically living in the seventies right now, in in all our facilities. And I mean, when you start thinking about some of the things that you attract people into this community for, this education, right, the schools, they're doing the best they can right now in updating their schools, you're looking at the hospital, that's gonna update it. So city offices also need to be something more than just, you know, a drive by, and when you you just think about it as something is something.
A lot of things happen out of city hall.
Yeah, I mean, you look at some of the bigger communities, and that's some of the best places, that, some of the nicest buildings. Not to say that you need to spend a ton of money, but I also think that it needs to be something more than just what it is now, you know, it needs to be updated, one way or another. And, you know, we've, we've been trying, when I was with the PD, we were frightened of trying to get out of that building for a long time, and it's just because it needs to be.
Yep, that was my concern, I just want to make sure we have some place for the PD.
And if the jail is locations that are not, you know, responsive to their needs, we need to find a remedy, and it sounds like the best remedy.
Because the current, the current, well, the one, one of the three designs we do have has everything in the, in the, the plan that PD asked for. Garage, the space they need, everything that that Chief Toso communicated and said, this is what we want. So we put it in that plan, but we do have the three plans, we have the one with everybody, one with the PD and the sheriff, and the one with just the sheriff. So we do have the options, I just, like I said, I don't want PD to be left out in the lurch if something does go awry.
Location was one of the concerns at the time, but now that you've such changed that idea, too.
Yep, so, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to make it.
And as far as the county, you know, we've worked with, we have a meeting, and we talked with with all the agencies, and we've discussed, you know, what we're gonna do, and we gotta share that when we have these meetings, and some of them, if they would tend them, would have known some of those things that we're discussing.
Absolutely, like I said, I'm just, I'm merely the messenger on that, Mayor.
And I, and I agree, you know, the county needs to be aware of what we're doing, but we have to make our decisions based on what our needs are.
Yeah, a hundred percent, but I just, like I said, I I told him I would, I would.
And and we've got to sell this to the public, too.
Absolutely.
And and this is a big sale, you know, anytime you sales tax, but we're, we're trying to do our best to offer a little reprieve on something to sell it.
Aside from this, the whole jail thing, I do agree that our infrastructure in this city is archaic.
And to keep in mind that we have land that we need to purchase for the future of our landfill, we got the one arm banded, and, you know, maintenance is a huge item, and a roof is about three, $400,000 to replace. So, I mean, and we don't have really any mechanism to pay for that, without increasing services onto the public.
Well, like, and you think about sales taxes, it's not the city that's paying for it, it's not our property tax that are paying for it, it's everybody between outside the area, the lake region area, and tourists that come through, it's not just us in the city that pay for it, it's everybody.
They benefit by the services that we provide for.
And so there's a necessity for that, and it also allows us to get money from, you know, outside sources, you know, and I think that's, it's the greatest avenue that we can go down.
And I think it, just in general, as far as the city's finances go, and it's kind of a commission, it ultimately, they're commission policy decisions, but right now with our sales tax, you know, I said forty-two point seven five percent goes in the general fund, and then right now, we're putting thirty-two and a half into our infrastructure fund, 2033. And so, and then the rest goes to like bond payments that are on infrastructure for the most part. And so if if hard infrastructure outside the city facilities, water, sewer, streets, storm, stormwater, is going to remain priority one A for that, that money, then we don't have an alternative funding source, right, for city buildings, right? So if you, if we take ten, we would, we would need to take the equivalent of about 10% of our property taxes to get that to that same $400,000, which means it's not going to things that are outside this building. And so, you know, it's, it's kind of a judgment of the commission as to, do we want to maintain that to be priority one A, and if we do, and we want to continue to do these things, we do need to, to, to do it. But we can do so, like I said, in a long term, responsible way, and being a sales tax dependent community, we. And being a sales tax dependent community, we can have exceptionally reasonable city property times rates by doing some of this, because we can help transfer off, transfer more money over into the, the operation side. And we, and we talk about public safety services and how much we levy. We levy $2 million total, or 2.075 million total. Um, if you add in the library, the airport and the library, we spent 3.8 million on public safety. Four and a half, o- over 4.7 to be counting, you know, half a city attorney services, 911 contributions to the LAC board. And that money all comes from other, that, that all, that money all comes from other places, right? And so I could give a 10-minute presentation on how the general fund works and how we're taking money from here and we're bringing it over here. Saying this percentage of this person's salary, uh, is utilities and we transfer that money over. And we do a lot of things, which we can talk more in detail at budget time if you guys want, or even right now, but, um, but if we're going to maintain the level of public safety services we are in the future, we're going to, we're going to need some more avenues to find, uh, operating money. Things like fully staffing the fire station at night. 20 years ago, we had 16 sworn officers. Now we have 20. And the population of the town is the same. 10 years ago, we only had 18. We have two more than we did, you know? And if you count health, there's $200,000 difference, right? So, uh, those are some of those, those things. And, you know, we will, there'd be about three or four years of kind of hand wringing and, um, cutting here, raising revenue here, transferring this money over here. But at the end of the day, I think that that's all going to come to a head. Um, and I don't want, I don't want to talk as if I'm making assumptions. I mean, I can give you the, the 20-point, 20-minute PowerPoint on it, um, but I'll save you that for tonight at least.
I think we all, we all agree and get what you're saying in, in a roundabout way, agree with you, so.
I think what we want to do is, this was brought up tonight for, uh, you know, just absorbing it. We, we got to plan some public meetings and sell it to the public and give them an opportunity to, uh, feedback.
Do a question for Commissioner Pierce.
Yes, sir.
Do you have the three totals for all facilities of all state agencies?
Yeah.
Eighty-eight million, was that the top one?
The, the 88 million
Was the low number of the high.
Was the lowest.
Okay.
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight to 66. The high one is anywhere from 92 to 97 million.
And that would be for all?
That's for all law enforcement together in one facility.
The middle, the middle one was just the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office.
Yep, and the other one, the one will be, if we added you, if we added the PD back in, we're looking at probably another close to 10 million for that space and the garages and everything else. So it's just the, because with this, with also what I want to make you understand is that price also includes all furniture, all wiring, all the computers. It includes everything. So when you come in, no more money will have to be spent on your office furniture or your computer systems. All that stuff is included within that price. That's why it's on the higher end. They provide everything through this. But it's just, you know, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and, I got, I got, I got two chairs with this. You know, I got the board and then I got here. I'm just passing on the information what everybody decides on? Cool. I'm not going to cheerlead for, for one over the other, so.
So I think just the general concept is this, right? Raise the sales tax to the, to what, you know, was perceived to be the maximum, right? It's 3%. We all, everybody thought that that was the maximum, but apparently there was a, there was a bill that was defeated in the House that tried to cap it at three. So there are, there is actually not a cap, but there was an assumption that there was, um, to that 3% level. Use that money to pay for some sort of a facility bond payment for the next 15 years, um, to relocate PD downtown, relocate city office to another location downtown, possibly grab a building, urban renewal, those sorts of things. Use a chunk of that offset costs to city residents, offset current and impending future costs uh, to city residents through utility, through their utility bills with the elimination of that water source replacement fund and using sales tax to fund that, um, that fund to its necessary level. And then using a line on saying, you could say any sales tax brought in over, and the number I had in there was 900,000, transfer over in the general fund to offset property taxes and continue to support, uh, our ability to point, our ability to continue the public safety services that we do at their current levels. And then the rest slowly gradually grows the fund, kind of like a mini legacy fund, to a number to be determined by the commission, uh, where you could cap it. Uh, and then after that, once the fund reaches its maturity, you have a whole, a lot of money that you could, um, do things on behalf of the residents, uh, and the future commissions will have to decide what to do with that. But really that's the principle of something that you could do, uh, to get that done. And, and like I said, you know, we thought about the police department idea, but we wanted to make sure that if we did present something, that it would be kind of a revenue neutral thing to, to the vast majority of the residents of Devils Lake, which that $108 really does. And, and, you know, it's a meaningful impactful thing. I think about everybody that lives in the community, whether you rent, if you rent and you pay the utility bill, you would see that.
Okay, I guess no action's necessary tonight, so.
But, but really, I guess from the commissions, we're, we're seeking a, we're seeking either a, a green light or a red light on this, whether to continue looking at finer details, um, drilling things down, or give us a red light and say, hey, nice, nice, nice try and, but let's just fix up City Hall to be City Hall and continue.
I don't see the problem in looking into it, you know, that's
We're going to have to spend some money on some few things though, right? As far as architect, you know, drawings and things of that.
Yeah, well, between Mike and Devin, why don't you guys, um, give them a, give them update as far as the actual planning for future renovation of this, of the facility and that, what, what that's going to entail? Would you welcome that, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Between Devin and Mike, as far as speaking with an architect and whatnot.
Yeah, so, you know, what's included in your packet is just some concepts that Devin had put together, right? It's nothing more than concepts. If we're going to pursue, um, doing something at City Hall, then we'd bring in an architect, of course. And then here's some concepts that we looked at. And when you do that, you would, you know, identify a program, kind of walk through everything, very similar, uh, Commissioner Pierce, to what was completed when you were looking at the, you know, not to that magnitude, but you look at the office space required and things like that. Things may change, right? The concept that's before you, if it became City Hall or if it became PD, may be different when it's all said and done. But then you start to incur costs, right, when we're doing that. Um, as far as, uh, you know, a, a more robust plan, we would have to look at things, you know, cost per square foot order of magnitude costs, or if you're going to renovate something, right? Urban renewal, or if you're going to build new in the downtown area potentially. And so all of that, um, you know, some costs will be incurred when we do that. But for now, realistically, it's, uh, looking at, do the concepts seem reasonable if we go down this path? And if it's, uh, further, uh, further pursued and the green light is given, I think then we'll start to very, uh, you know, aggressively pursuing some things on, okay, make sure that the four and a half million, four and a half to six million, we think that's a fairly reasonable number based on per square foot costs. If you look a little harder, uh, we want to make sure that those costs are further refined. Make sure that we're confident with that.
I think it would make it a little easier for us if we saw a realistic number and, uh, you know, this is what it's, you know, rather than see a design and then question.
And of course, all it is, is whether or not we get the approval from the, you know, community to do it. You know, it's all hinges on that.
So, and what are we looking at right now? I mean, we're looking at just saying, hey, I think it's a great idea to walk down this path right now to see
I think that's what we're looking for, just forge ahead.
And then get some feedback from the general community until that time.
There'll be a time we have to make a actual commitment.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you guys will receive feedback from the community between now and the next meeting. And we're going to drill down, you know, uh, as far as, as far as, um, what a realistic timeline would look like. But at some point, the commission's going to have to commit to what, what they want to do, right? We can give you the information that you need, um, but I think the concept's there.
I think the more information, the better. So I don't see a problem with just greenlighting it to
Yep.
To go ahead and keep moving forward in your, in your request of getting the information. That's just my opinion.
Good, everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Go, leave her.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Spencer.
And thank you, Mike. Thank you, Devin.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Devin.
Well, Mike spoke up for him.
I appreciate that the commissioner knows who's, uh, does the work in the back. He's the cad guy thinker.
Okay, we'll move on. Citizen comment, we have nothing at this time. And nothing under informational items. So we entertain a motion to approve the payment of bills as listed.
Motion, pay the bills as listed.
Commissioner Pierce.
Second.
Commissioner Eulenkamp. Any further discussion? Real call.
Commissioner Hach.
Hi.
Commissioner Eulenkamp.
Hi.
Commissioner Pierce.
Hi.
Commissioner Knozke.
Hi.
President Moll.
Aye, motion carried. If there's no other business to come before the commission, meeting adjourned.